Okay, checking YouTube audio, one, two, three, four, five, six.
For the city of Della Field to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Miley, if you could do the roll call, please.
Other person, Henry?
Here.
Other person, Schaefer?
Here.
Other person, Valley?
Here.
Other person, Wilkin?
Here.
Other person, Grummer?
Here.
Other person, Price?
Here.
Mayor Iker?
Here.
Administrator, Hafner?
Here.
All right, look, so minutes, looking for a motion to approve the April 16th, 2024 organizational meeting minutes.
I move to approve the April 16th organizational meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved.
And that was Price on the second?
Yes.
And as noted, the April 15th regular meeting minutes will be ready at our next common council meeting. Okay, now, next, any comments from the city of Della Field citizens for anything on the agenda? Going once? Okay, citizen comments are now closed. So now we have a special order of business, and that'll be a presentation by Phil Cossin, our municipal advisor with Ellers and Associates. Phil, the stage is yours.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now on, okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Phil Cossin with Ellers. Some new faces, some not new faces. Nice to be back with you, and I didn't say that. Nice to be back with you tonight. Phil Cossin with Ellers, we've been the city's municipal advisor for quite a few years now, and I'm not a few... Maybe I'll speak into the microphone a little bit more. But our role here is multifaceted, and our primary role working with the city is to assist the city with debt issuance. When the city goes out and borrows money for whatever purpose it is, we assist in that process. And we also have been involved in tax increment financing, talking about possibly closing a district soon. And also get involved with investments of like bond proceeds and general fund and those kind of things. So that's our role with the city. In your packet, you have two documents I want to kind of walk through relatively quickly, but feel free to stop me along the way if you have questions. We have two documents. One is a pre-sale report. It's up on the screen. It looks like this. And the pre-sale report kind of lays out the terms and conditions of the financing. And then there is a corresponding resolution that was prepared by the city's bond attorney, which is Hush Blackwell. And so the resolution sets forth then in a little more legalese and detail, the tax exemption. So these are exempt from federal tax, so they're tax-exempt bonds, which is what allows you the ability to drive down the overall cost of the issuance. So one thing that has changed in the market is that in Wisconsin, in early April, there was a change in how municipalities throughout the state may issue debt. So you historically have issued general obligation notes, and what notes means is that it's an amortization schedule of 10 years or less. And that's a conservative way to borrow money, meaning you're paying it off very quickly, and you're trying to match the asset life with the term of the debt and not ever exceed it. You can issue up to 20 years in the state of Wisconsin, and typically, if you're going to issue longer than 10 years, it was called bonds. I already messed up. I called it bonds. It says notes you're issuing. But bonds have gone away. As of early April of this year, there's a state statute that required municipality to issue bonds if it was going to be longer than 10 years. And that law was stricken from the books in Wisconsin, and so everything is notes going forward. And that's good news for municipalities, and the reason being, when you issue notes, you have the ability to kind of share money between public purposes. So if a street project comes in less than a park project, you can share the money from one to the other a little more freely than you would have been able to do in the past. So there is some little more flexibility now than there used to not be under the bond resolution. So the city, as I indicated, has typically issued notes, and that's what you're looking to do again here. So in the pre-sale report, I'm going to walk through a couple of the pages here and kind of give you a feel for how this, how the issue is done. So what we advocate and what we think, feel very strongly about is issuing competitive notes. And what that means is that you will sell the notes to the low bidder. So we prepare, help the city in preparing an official statement, which is like a prospectus on the city. And you take that, and we will send that to different banks and underwriters, local, regional, state, national banks and underwriters. And they will set up and bid, and these are all recognized banks and underwriters. They're not fly-by-night by any means. And they will bid on the bonds on a specific date and time. We'll talk about that. And then the low bid wins. It's the same concept if you're going to put a new roof on City Hall, or you're going to bid out a street project, why not bid out your money and try to get the best rate possible? So that's what we're doing here as well. This will finance your city's 2024 capital projects that were part of your 24 budget. So that's what we're looking to finance. The term here is 10 years. It's notes. And under authority in that middle section, one page up, thank you, under authority, you'll see that every municipality has a borrowing capacity, meaning you can borrow up to 5% of the total value of the community for general obligation debt. It's easy, always easy to borrow money. It's hard to pay it back, right? That's no different with these type of obligations. 5% of the city's limit is, allows you to borrow, if you look at the middle of the page, 13.9, almost $14 million. That's what you have outstanding of 101 million capacity. So you've borrowed money over time for different capital expenditures, but you have a lot of capacity left. Even after this debt issue, you're only about 12% of your capacity. So you have a lot of capacity going forward if you have to take on other type of projects. This will be a 10-year note. It does have a call feature, and the call feature just allows you, if rates drop, or if you have enough money to pay off the debt early, you have the ability to do that without any prepayment-type penalties, and that's scheduled in year seven. It's pretty much what we would expect on a 10-year note is that that call date. This will be bank-qualified, meaning banks can bid on this as well, not just underwriting firms that are national firms, but local banks. And we will make sure all the local banks in the area will have an opportunity to bid on this as well. The city will have to go through a rating process. The city has been rated by Moody's Investor Service. Current rating is AA2. That's a very high rating. What the strengths, as you can imagine, probably are for Della Field is your wealth indices is significant, well above state average, well above a lot of your peers. Your total value is very good, and you have a decent fund balance. Those are really the three drivers of your rating as much as anything else. But we'll go through the rating process with Moody's and make sure that they are comfortable with everything as it's scheduled right now. This, again, will be a competitive sale that I've already mentioned. That's under method of sale placement. And this will be a parameter sale, and I've explained the parameter sale in the past to the city council. And the parameter sale just says that we will establish a variety of parameters that have to be met by the winning bidder. And if the winning bid meets those parameters, we don't necessarily bring it back for your approval. You will see the winning bids. You'll get all the information, but it gets signed off by either the mayor or by the administrator and because all the parameters have been met. So on the top of page three are the parameters as they've been laid out. An issue size not to exceed 1,870. That's the dollar amount of the issuance. We're not going to allow anything above and beyond that. A max bid and a min bid are just, minimum bid are just how underwriters of banks structure their bids. It gives them some flexibility in how they structure it, because in almost every case, they're going to turn around and sell it in the secondary market. They're not going to necessarily keep it in their portfolio. So it gives them a little flexibility in structuring debt. We have a maximum true interest cost at 5%. We should be able to easily beat that. Right now, I would expect you to be somewhere around 3.5%. So we kind of purposely have that higher, and we have the ability to move maturities around a little bit as well, depending on how the bid structure is, because what we're trying to accomplish in our planning models, working with the city, is to not have kind of peaks and valleys in your debt service levy, but to keep them relatively level going forward. So when budget time comes, it's kind of a relatively known number, and we're not going to see a big jump one year and a drop the following. So that's always our goal when we structure and work on putting this together. The players on page number four are identified. Again, Hush Blackwell is the city's bond attorney, a paying agent, and Moody's Investor Service are the rating agencies. So on page number five of the packet, you'll see the timeline as it's been laid out. If tonight you authorize us to proceed with this, that'll put in motion us working with city staff on preparing the official statement, which, again, is like a prospectus on the city. We will have a series of calls around the week of May 20th, one with the rating agency Moody's, and other due diligence call on the preparation of that document. Right now, we have it scheduled to award the sale of the notes on June 5th. That's not a regular scheduled evening or a council meeting. That's a Wednesday, and we like to move sales this time of year off of Mondays and Tuesdays because every municipality meets on Monday and Tuesdays. And so a lot of sales occur on Monday and Tuesday, and it's nice to kind of pull it off of that normal schedule into a different day. So that, June 5th is a Wednesday. And then we have an estimated closing of June 25th. That would be when the funds are all wired to the city, and you have the ability to use the funds for projects. And as you draw down the money, you can invest those funds. Ironically, you know, right now, you can invest the money at a higher earning than you can, than you'll pay on the notes. So during the time of drawdown, you can actually make a little bit of money. The, we put together a series of schedules in here. I wasn't going to spend a lot of time going through it, but what we're trying to get at with the schedule is, one, let's look at your existing obligations of the city. That's what we call the base case. That's the first table. And what it'll show you, if you go all the way to the third column from the right, is that you're currently at 91 cents per thousand for debt service levy. Okay, so that's where you are currently, and you can see it drops off to 86 cents, 81 cents, 75 cents, and it drops off, and that gives you that ability to kind of layer in other debt obligations and not see a lot of spikes in the debt. It really drops off in 2029, and then all the debt has matured by 2033 that you have outstanding right now. So some of that debt is this building, the DPW building, and some streets and parks and those kind of things that are still being paid off over time. So that's where you are today. The following schedule is the, is the actual sizing of the general obligation note. How do we get to the 1,870? Now, a couple of these items are bid items. So we have a max bid in here for, you'll see where it says maximum underwriters discount. That's like a point on the mortgage. So they will bid interest rate and they'll bid discount. And the winning bid will, when you combine the two, will be the winning bid, and we'll kind of take you through all of that in our sale day report, so you exactly know where the bids came in. The schedule is on the next page. This is the amortization schedule for this issue that's being issued. You can see, if you look at the estimated rates, it looks a little weird. The early, in the early years, the rates are higher than you'll see in like three, four, five, six, seven year. We have an inverted curve still, which is kind of a, which is precisely why you can invest money at a higher rate than your borrowing money today. So a little bit different time. We've been dealing with this now for a period of time with the inverted curve. But this is kind of the structure of what we would expect to see, and we have a lot of issues that we take on. I think we have six notes selling this week for different municipalities, so we have a pretty good idea what's happening in the market. The next page is this tax, what we call the tax impact analysis. I challenge anybody to read those numbers. I apologize. I also, and actually, it's so bad, I took a picture of it so I could read it to you and blow it up. So if you look at, remember when I talked about the 91 cents per thousand number that's existing for '24? What we're projecting that to be in '25 is 94 cents per thousand, and '26, 90 cents per thousand. So it stays pretty level, and then it starts to drop off again. Those are projections. We hope to be able to level that out even a little more in '25 going forward, but again, that's what we had expected it would look like. So what we're trying to, again, boil it down to is, what's the impact to the taxpayer by undertaking these projects? And you'll see that the line before, I'm sorry, the line after that total tax rate for debt is the annual tax on a $450,000 home. Again, that's just for your debt service levy. So you have an idea of what actually it looks like. About $411, that's existing where you are today. With this issue, we're projecting that'll go up to about $423, and then it'll start to drop back off. So projections at this point, we hope to come in always with a little bit better numbers for you at the end of the day. And then the last page is really a bond chart that we show really what's happening in the bond market. Yes, rates were really cheap back in '21, '22, '23, well, '21, '22, before the spike happened in '23. We thought we were on a good downward trajectory for a while, but the last couple of months, we've seen rates start to creep up a little bit until today. We've seen a little bit of drop in rates again. So the parameters resolution, the one thing I wanted to also mention is, because we're selling the parameters resolution on the sale on a non-city council night, it's easy for us to move that sale in case there's any odd economic news that would come out that would maybe shift the market dramatically. We can easily just pull back and just say, we're going to wait a week or two weeks, whatever it is, until things settle down. And trust me, I've been around long enough. I've dealt with the '08, '09, '10 downturn of real estate market. I've dealt with COVID. I've dealt with a lot of things over the years. So there are times you do need to kind of pull the sale back and say, let's just wait and see, hopefully, things settle down. So that's, I'm happy to answer any questions that may have raised. But again, that this tonight just gives us authorization to proceed in preparation of the documents, and then to hold the rating call and go through that procedure.
Do you have a question?
Yep.
Yeah. So you mentioned we're going out for a competitive bid. Are there municipalities that just simply say, let's strategically pick a spot and team up with our, one of our select banks and say, this is the rate that looks great. Let's do it?
Yeah.
So what, what's a disadvantage? I mean, assuming that you can shave a couple, a little bit off by going competitively, what are the costs associated with competitive bidding versus just doing what I described?
No, it's, the costs are going to be really no different. The, you know, there are, and I would say typically, non-rated or smaller communities, that if they're non-rated, the notes may not be as attractive to the marketplace and may not receive as many bidders. And in many cases, they'll go out and just solicit a bid from a, maybe a local bank and partner they have in town or something like that. So we do a fair number of negotiated sales in those situations, but for most communities that are rated, like you are, and highly rated, like you are, our data that we keep have tracked and tracked over the years show that a competitive sale will net a better result.
Okay. Come on, anybody have questions?
Regarding the unexpected spike of some sort on the week or the day, what would you need in order to change the date? Would you be able to?
The nice thing is we...
Or do you need an action from us?
Yeah, we don't need to go back to the council for action. We, this gives us the latitude to just work with staff, and we communicate with Tom and Amy and just say, look, market's a little strange right now. We just took bids yesterday. We didn't like what happened. We're going to just, you know, talk through it. And if they agree that they want to see it delayed, we would delay it. Yeah, but no additional action to come back to the council to do so.
How late can that happen, Phil? Is it the day of?
We've, day of is tough because their underwriters are already setting up the bid the day of, like the morning of, and even the evening before they're setting up the bid. We typically would say the day before would be the last kind of, you know, by, I would say by noon the day before.
Phil, you indicated as the city has been AA plus rated?
AA2, yeah.
AA2, and went through the two or three positives that the city has. Are there any negatives, in your opinion, that the city has? I mean, AA2, there is AAA, yes?
Yeah, there is. There's AA, there's AA1, and then there's AAA. There's about seven, I think there's seven Triple As in the state of Wisconsin. Large, typically much larger municipalities. So one of the, one of the, there's about 15 criteria that are used. And I mentioned three or four of them. One of them is just population. That would be your negative. That would be your negative. You're relatively small in population. You have a lot of value, but you're small in population. I would say another, and I don't want to paint it as a negative, is your growth numbers aren't as great. And I'm talking construction growth, not, not valuation of property, because I'm sure, you know, statewide, the state saw about a 14, on average, a 14% increase last year in property value jump. And the year before, I think it was like 9%. So it's been substantial for everyone statewide. It's construction. You probably lag a little behind, I would say, in some, some communities. And we see that when we go through levy limits and you have net new construction, which really drives your budget. So that would, that would probably one area, just pop, sure size, population wise, and then just net new construction.
Thanks.
Let me just add to that. In the past, I remember one year, me asking the question of Moody's, and they mentioned a relative lack of diversification of different types of tax base. No industrial to speak of, overly reliant on residential component of tax base. And then, I also do know that there is one community smaller than us that's AAA rated, and I believe their fund balance is over 50% of annual expenses, which helps them achieve that.
I think that's sidebar, that has been a struggle for us. You know, there was great work done by the city a few years ago to encourage development, net new construction, and really continues to be an opportunity to move beyond the residential construction. We've had some.
Yeah.
But there's, I think there's still opportunity.
Yeah, I agree with Tom. Those are both great points that, that we hear feedback when we have those rating calls. There's very little negative that we hear back, but you know, those are the areas, you're, you know, heavy residential, which is a lot of Waukesha County communities.
Minus any other questions for Phil? We're looking for a resolution to pass, Resolution 2024-05.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-05, authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed 1.87 million in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2024A, to fund city capital projects.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
I actually need a roll call on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do a roll call then.
Henry?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Wilkin?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Phil. Obviously, motion carries. Okay, consent agenda. There are no items on the consent agenda, so go on to eight boards, committees and commission reports. A, licenses.
Nothing for licenses.
No licenses. B, plan commission. So Matt, what do you have? And if you need any help, let us know.
Yeah, thank you. Part of the city's zoning code update, we have a, a motion, item on the agenda relative to non-conforming uses, structures, lots and permits specifically. This was passed by the plan commission in January. The specifics are in the attachment in your agenda. I will briefly touch on it as best I understand it. However, I was obviously not present on plan commission at that time. This was passed, as I said unanimously, by plan commission. Included a few things, revision to Section 52 to remove ratio, where it was incorrectly inserted as part of a previous code amendment. Also limits the amount of structural repairs and alterations. And identifies what level of improvements are allowed to non-conforming structures. Do you add anything, Mr. Mayor?
I'd just, I'd just add that this is, this is part of a, a list of different ordinances that have been updated, in particular to remove ambiguity for the, for staff and the building inspector, so that there's more of a hard set equation to apply, that the applicant would also be able to digest, and Scott could translate more easily for people. So this, this isn't a dramatic change in the type of improvements you can do to a non-conforming structure. It's more defining the parameters specific to how, how we determine value improvement and eliminating, like I said, there was a, Matt pointed out, there's a typo kind of in the language. So that's this, that's the most significant part that I recall. Do you have anything, Tom, to add to that, or no?
I do not.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion for ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number 830.
Any questions? Discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The maximum floor area of 5,000 square feet is redundant with the 40% rule. So we're saying it should not exceed 5,000 square feet or 40%, whichever is more restrictive. 40% is always more restrictive. Can we just strike the 5,000 so we're not repeating requirement?
I believe that then still applies for structures larger than 12,500, where the 5,000 then is not the, so I get your point. It's, there's redundancy, but I don't, it's belts and suspenders. I don't think it's really, if you want to get rid of it, you could, but I don't know that it's necessary.
Okay.
So I'm not trying to tell you you can't, but so if you want to go ahead and try to amend the motion, you are able to do so, but... Was there, was there a second? I'm sorry.
First.
Keep your track, okay.
I second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay. Ordinance 830 is updated. Anything else? Alderman Grimmer?
Um, no. We refer you to the minutes.
Okay. C, Lake Welfare Committee, Alderman Price.
And we did not meet. We'll be meeting Wednesday.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer, Park and Recreation Committee, Tree Board.
Park and Rec, we approved Riverwalk Memorial Bench for Judge Housman. And we had a wonderful little volunteer event. Cub Scouts from McGee Elementary School needed a, needed a community project. So we put them to work on the Riverwalk and the riverbanks between Genesee Street and roughly the Fish Hatchery. And they came back with seven trash bags of litter and half a toilet. So it was a nice cleanup project for about a dozen scouts and their parents.
Where's the other half? Now, that's next year's project.
That's up.
Okay. Public Works, Alderman Wilken.
No meeting, no report. Just a reminder that brush pickup will be the week of May 13th.
Good reminder.
Dirk, I just have a question for you. I've been trying to attend the Public Works meeting for the last two months, and they haven't had a meeting. It's unusual to not have meetings two months in a row. Is something going on there, or what?
I, I only know that we didn't meet this month because there was nothing to discuss on the agenda.
Yeah, there was nothing to discuss last month either.
That, that was before my time. I can't, can't comment on that. But I expect we'll meet in June, but wait and see.
Sounds good. All right, fair enough. Delhart Commission, that's me. Our next meeting is the third Tuesday of this month, and we've got a couple new members. Aside from that, I'll have someone to report at the next meeting, or maybe have a volunteer to do it for me. Police Commission, Alderperson Valdi.
Yeah, we met last Wednesday, May 1st, and we discussed a couple of things on the agenda. One was hiring, moving forward with the hiring of a new officer, and we're very excited about that. And then, a long sort of tangentially, there was a discussion, and not a formal action, but subsequently further action on the hiring process to sort of mimic what's been going on in other municipalities, in other police commissions, and that is sort of an open hiring process, so that someone can submit a resume, even if there isn't a posted opening. The theory is that a few years ago, when we posted an opening, there could be as many as 100 applicants. Now, we maybe get fewer than 10. And a lot of other municipalities are having these open application opportunities, and that sometimes someone might miss, like if it's only open for, let's say, 10 days or two weeks. So the feeling is that we might be able to latch on to a potential officer. So beyond that, we don't have a set next meeting, but just stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Henry, Library Board.
No meeting, no report. Our next meeting is next Tuesday.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah, no meeting, no report.
Okay, you sure? Okay, okay. Promotion Tourism Commission, Alderperson Valdi.
Our, I haven't been to a meeting yet, but we have one on the 14th.
Very good.
Woo-hoo.
Okay. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission. I don't believe there was a meeting since our last council meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Alderperson Grimmer.
Yeah, we had a meeting a few Wednesdays ago. Just an update that the venue will be changing. It has, when we first merged with the seven, we migrated around to different communities, but then we kind of hung out at the city of Dellafield Station, 42. June, July, and August will be in Wales, the town of Dellafield and Noshota respectively. Other things going on are, the ladder truck has been out and delivered and in service. So if you drive by and see a neat shiny new ladder truck, that's it. Budgets remain relatively on track through the first few months of the year. And there is some new reporting software that, that the chief has. It's relatively impressive. Identifies brownouts by station, which persists. Goes through volumes by municipality, goes through a heat map, so you can see where volumes are, are being generated, not only within the city of Dellafield, but within the other municipalities. And of course, response times, response times by shift. So there's a lot of good data in those. The last thing I'll mention is there is a, a change where previously, the department only hired firefighter paramedics. Given the challenge in hiring firefighter paramedics, there's transition to hiring firefighter EMT. EMT is a lesser grade of first responder. But within 18 months of hiring a firefighter EMT, the expectation is that they essentially graduate, matriculate into a paramedic role. That's all I got.
Yeah, just a question. With the added staff time, with the added personnel we have, have our response times continued to drop a little bit?
We just got through hiring, and the process of hiring those remaining approved positions. So I think you'll start to see the results of those in the months ahead.
Okay.
The, the new reporting software, will that also be able to track expected response times versus actual response times?
I think we asked that question, and I don't know if we, I don't recall an answer. I think we, I, it was asked in open session. I'll find out for you. I know it's a question, I know it's a question that we're all concerned about, and I don't recall a definitive answer.
I would bet we could get Chief Fenning in here for a show and tell in a month or two.
Yeah.
Walk us through just a quick overview, and then answer those types of questions.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, there is continuing discussions on, on getting a study done. And those, yep, are continuing with the municipalities.
Great, thank you. Dear Management Committee, Alderman Wilken.
No meeting, no report, but the team is going to be getting together this weekend to clear some shooting lanes and things like that, particularly over at the, the brush pile area. So next meeting will be next month.
And in particular, or specifically, shooting lanes meaning bows and arrows?
Absolutely.
Okay, just so no one confuses it with, there's no lead getting slung around in the city?
No lead flying around.
Okay. Other boards, committees, commissions, none? Unfinished business. So an update regarding the enforcement of property complaints for excessive junk, et cetera. Is that you, Tom?
It is.
I know you do other things, but that sounds-
Yeah, so if you remember, this was on the council agenda about two months ago. And at that time, there was three properties that the council expressed concern about and directed staff to pursue enforcement and report back in 60 days on how that's going. The day after that, we received a email from Alderman Schaefer adding, and that was, he was forwarding an email from one of his constituents, adding eight more property complaints to the list. And then, Alderman Price added a property on Genesee Street to the list. So that totaled 12 properties. And as far as what we've accomplished is, we inspected all 12 of those properties. Three of the properties had no violations of our municipal code observed. Five of the properties had some minor violations, which were quickly correct, corrected by cooperative property owners. There are three properties where we still have not achieved compliance, and just recently, those properties were forwarded to our city attorney for further action. And then, there was one property where we granted a extension to April 30th for the property to come into compliance, and our building inspector, we're, that's pending his reinspection of the property. As we went through the properties, there's some things that we noted as far as limitations in our code and what would, you would think would typically be monitored or regulated. Number one, our code does not limit how long someone can have a large garbage dumpster on their property. There's one property where it appears, or people have stated, that the dumpster's pretty much been there for as long as anyone can remember. The person's operating a business out of the home and uses the dumpster. From all indications, the dumpster is maintained, as well as a dumpster can be maintained. It's not ever heaping full, it's emptied regularly. But it's right in the front yard, right in the driveway. And that is something that the council might want to consider, looking at a code amendment to address that. The second thing is, there are some driveways out there that just have a lot of stuff in the driveway. Looks like some families have seven or eight cars in the driveway. Some families have three cars, an RV, a camper, and two boats in the driveway. Things like that. So as an example, this property on Genesee Street, which, which Paul, you asked about, the only violation that was there is you, they had, one of the many things they had in their driveway was an RV, and our code says you can't have an RV in the front yard. And so, they could have moved the RV to the backyard, but they, my understanding is, they removed the RV from the property, property completely. The last thing that we, that stood out to me is, there are some people that store their vehicles, trucks, trailers on the lawn, and sometimes haphazardly on the lawn, not even orderly, just off the edge of the driveway or something like that. And there's nothing that allows us to enforce something like that. And so, it might make sense to look at something to address that, that. And those are the, the three bullet points that stood out to staff as things that we might be missing in our code as far as typical or reasonable enforcement.
Tom, I think when we talked about this two months ago, you thought that the code had kind of a general, the definition of a mess, whatever you called it.
Blight.
A blight that you could use to kind of get around some of these things? You feel that's not the case anymore, and we need to change the law? Or we can't come back and say it's a, it's a general nuisance and, you know, move it?
Yeah, so the, the pictures, when we talked two months ago, we were talking about three specific properties. Those pictures were piles of junk. It was hot water heaters on top of bathtub, whatever, old lawnmowers, which clearly fit the definition of a blight. People just piling junk on top of each other. There was one that was, it looked like a junkyard of cars. There was one that was, it looked like a junkyard of cars. And it was obvious from the picture that many of these cars were inoperable and whatnot, so clearly a blight. But when we're talking about just people having a lot of operable vehicles in their driveway, and some of their trailers and vehicles and boats on their lawn, that is something that I was not contemplating at that time. And, yeah, something that is, if the council wants to be able to enforce things like that, that our code is lacking for those things. Okay.
It seems like a lot of the, based on the 12 properties where the building inspector went, we've got a lot of results from those people. Maybe all of us and everybody in the community monitoring and following up on complaints is a big part of the solution, other than the couple little gaps maybe we have in our, in our code. We've got results, so.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. I just have to say, this is some of the most entertaining reading I've done on a council agenda in a long time. It was really well-written.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of differences in perception and differences in expectations. And, I mean, there's some examples in here of the complaint and thought it was the worst house ever, and we look at it, and the only violation is the camper was missing a current registration sticker.
So if somebody cares to look at other communities' ordinances and see one that might add, you know, fill in a couple blanks and bring it forward, you know, I'll do the same. But, you know, just, we have to be cognizant of what we're, what we're doing, where we're pushing people past just what rights they have and what is actually desirable, you know, in general. So I've always said you can't legislate being a good neighbor, but we can help bring some order where it's appropriate. So if someone wants to have a little side project to look at other communities, that'd be great to have some suggestions thrown our way.
I know the community I was in before did require properly licensed registered vehicles if it's kept outside. The same thing with an RV or, you know, any vehicle. And also parking on hard surface. It was not allowed to be, to park on the lawn for extended period of time. We might have some challenges with that here with, you know, people's seasonal boat storage or other things. Golf carts, you know? But maybe there's something there that we can work with in terms of, it's got to be parked on pavement if it's, if it's a motor vehicle.
Just one more thing that I'll add.
It seemed to work very well in the community I was in before.
Just one more thing I'll add, and this might not come as a surprise, I'm sure it doesn't come as a surprise, but unfortunately, the ones that are the most difficult to enforce and the ones that need to get forwarded to the city attorney are the ones that we're probably all most familiar with and the most egregious violators. And it's frustrating because we talk with these property owners, they ask for, you know, a two-week or a three-week extension to, they say they'll take care of it, we come back, inspect, and nothing's changed. And, but, so we are moving forward with the city attorney for citations and whatnot to address those things. Also, you sometimes get a different interpretation from different attorneys. There've been a few properties in my history with the city of Dellafield where we have just sent in, 1-800-GOT-JUNK to clean up a property and sent the bill to the property owner and have been successful that way. And our current city attorney is suggesting that that's probably not an appropriate way to handle it.
Very effective, though, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tom. So Mayor's Report, and I'll start out the Mayor's Report by saying this is my first regular council meeting as mayor, and, and thank you for everybody, I've been received very well. And it's truly an honor, and I feel privileged to serve as the mayor of this community, and I'm going to do my best to represent us as best as I can. And I know that's relative, but I'm real proud of the, the city that I chose to make my home. And I'm open to suggestions, and I've been real busy as of yet. I have not been saying no to much, so I'm getting a good feel of how busy you can make yourself as mayor. Just a quick rundown. Right, I might have been the day after, or I was elected, right, that first week at least, I went into the swearing-in of, I believe it was four new firefighters and EMTs, paramedics. And it's a good-looking crew, and I was, I was happy to see that we were filling those spots. I also took Chief Fenning's recommendation and went to a FEMA training downtown at the airport, Milwaukee County Airport, where I was one of two city officials that were there as far as municipal officers. The only mayor, so I was called out as Mayor Tim the entire time. The rest of the, the group was there for Emergency Operations Center training for City of Milwaukee and County Milwaukee, and they're, they're getting just refreshed in anticipation of any possible things that could go wrong with during the Republican National Convention. So learned mostly that as a city official, I'm not supposed to be telling people what to do, I'm supposed to be helping them do their jobs in the case of a tornado, blizzard, power outage, terrorist attack, et cetera. And if anybody wants to know, our Emergency Operations Center is the training room at our fire station down on Main Street. So Main Street, Milwaukee Street. Main Street. Okay. 115 Main. And so I got a certificate, I've got .6 credits for the Texas A&amp;M Extension College. Went to a Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, Hawks Inn Annual Meeting, Beacon Hill Open House, which was an open house to welcome all the neighbors and get people to meet each other. We were, I received my first award on behalf of the city, the mayor. This is from Miller Marriott. And it was really just an appreciation for how the city worked with them. And I would be the first, and I'm sure that Chris Miller would be the second, to acknowledge that there was not any kind of a, it was not an easy road. There was no concessions that were unnecessarily made in the hopes of getting an award. It was a good partnership, and we stuck to our process. They adhered to it, and they're doing a nice development over there. And I think it was really nice for the city to get that acknowledgement in front of a group of new property owners, because one of the big things is to try to help the synergy that needs to happen so that they're welcome to the community and they get along and they, they contribute with everybody else. Also, went to the St. John's Excalibur Dinner, watched a lot of people throw money at a good cause. Highlight there was that they did raise their goal of funds for the upcoming year, and also that for the second year in a row, their enrollment's up by as much as 40%. So what has been languishing, they've got a new president there that's really doing a good job along with the rest of the staff, and they're putting out a good word and they're getting results. So that's, that's nice. I reemphasize the fact that they're a valued member of our community, and we want to see them stay. And so they're doing a good job there. And also, as Matt alluded to, coming up, there is a, the leadership from the seven municipal partners in the Lake Country Fire and Rescue are meeting on Thursday afternoon at the town of Dellafield to hear a presentation from the Wisconsin Policy Forum, which is a group that analyzes and helps consult with communities on how they can come to a good agreement for everyone on analyzing their resources, their needs, their usage, and what their formulas would be for funding a mutual fire department. So with that, I'll get to the rest of the list of things that are on the report, one of which, we did a little player trading here for some teams. So first order of business is to accept Jackie Valdez's resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I need a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
I'll go Mark. Okay, any discussion?
Oh, I had Wilken and Henry.
Let's do that.
Why, Grimmer? And then it was Wilken, Henry, and Schaefer, all three of you?
No, it wasn't me.
Okay. All right, I'm going to give it to Wilken. He had it by a second.
Gotcha, okay.
We don't need this.
Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, Jackie. Next is to confirm the appointment of Danielle Henry to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, welcome Danielle. Third is to confirm the appointment of Paul McAllister to vacate an alternate position on Delhart. We've had a couple vacancies, and now they're both going to be full if we fill this one.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Welcome, Paul. And now we have a couple Public Service Recognitions. So on behalf of the city of Dellafield, I'd like to take a moment to applaud and recognize our employees from City Hall, Dellafield Public Library, Department of Public Works, Dellafield Promotion and Tourism, Dellafield Police Department, Lake Country Fire and Rescue, staff such as our building inspector, our city planner, city engineer, because this is the official Public Service Recognition Week from May 5th through the 11th. And as a citizen, former elder person, and now mayor, I want to personally express my deepest thanks and gratitude for all city employees, for their dedicated service to all City of Dellafield residents, businesses, and visitors. And while they may not always hear it, their hard work and dedication as a City of Dellafield employee is valued and appreciated. So thank you for all of Dellafield staff for everything you do for our community. And an official proclamation, I will, I'm reading it fast, but it's not, because I don't mean every word. So, "Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border and patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and all around the world. Whereas public servants for the city of Dellafield include the clerk's office, public library, public works, Dellafield Promotion and Tourism, Dellafield Police Department, and Lake Country Fire and Rescue. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the city of Dellafield and their local government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy with irregular changes in its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Dellafield, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that May 5th through the 11th, 2024, is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city." So.
Amen.
Very good. Amen is right.
Hello.
Okay. And now, not to be outdone, and I'm following the lead of our Wisconsin League of Municipalities Association, different groups that put these things up, and our governor sends them my way, so I'm relaying some of this. It is also Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So whereas professional municipal clerks play a critical, important role in local government and elected, election administration, which are critical to the prosperity of the state and endurance of democracy, and whereas among numerous vital responsibilities, professional municipal clerks serve as the official record keepers of their respective municipalities and are tasked with ensuring transparency and communication between the governing bodies they represent and the people they serve. And whereas professional municipal clerks also provide essential support in the administration of elections, often preparing ballots, training election officials, and tabulating and certifying election results, and work to improve the administration of their responsibilities through partnerships, collaboration, and participation in education programs, workshops, and conferences. And whereas professional municipal clerks continue to display flexibility, resilience, and dedication to their responsibilities and in service to the community. And whereas, this week, the city of Dellafield joins the state of Wisconsin in recognizing and extending appreciation to our municipal clerk, Molly Schneider, for her exemplary dedication to community she represents. So I, the mayor of the city of Dellafield, do hereby proclaim that May 5th through 11th, 2024, is Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week. So, thank you, Molly. Okay. Now, let's see what else I have here. We'll see how these proclamations wear on me as we go. But also, I asked Crystal if, just, if she has a list of employees and how long they've been employed here? And she said yes, it took her a minute to send it to me. So I'll just recognize a couple people here that have anniversary, work anniversaries this month. And so I'll start in order of length. Sean Heinzel from DPW, this is his 30th year. So if you see him, I asked him if he was, if he was thinking about making a career of it, and he said yes. So thanks, Sean. And also, our detective Bloodow, he is in his 29th year. Just saw him this afternoon and told him congratulations as well. And Aaron Cook is DPW, he's in his eighth year. Now Molly is starting her fourth year as of yesterday. Well, she didn't work Sunday, but. And then Andrea Bissordi from our library is in her third year. David Yakal on DPW is in his second year. Patrick Gosenhimer on DPW is beginning his second year. And Luke Cahalan is a seasonal employee for DPW, so he's here as well. Do I have that right?
Did you get Chad Duvall?
I missed Chad Duvall, I'm sorry. DPW, 18 years. So, and I had his circle next to him. Anyway, so thanks, everyone, for your hard work and dedication, and just thought I'd bring up some names. Aside from that, I am done with my Mayor's Report, unless someone has questions. No good. Okay, new business. Approval of vouchers list.
I'll move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're paying our bills.
That was Schaefer on the second, correct?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, report of city officials. Mr. Hefner.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to have tonight, and Dirk beat me to it, is, is reminding people that brush pickup is next week. So there's a lot of brush piles out there already, and you've got one week left to get those piles out there, but they should be out by the side of the road by next Monday morning.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add, I did meet with Sean and Paul at DPW, and they, they can take big piles. I mean, seven feet long is almost preferable than a pile of small twigs because of the equipment that they have that really helps them do the job quickly. So keep that in mind and put it right by the side of the road.
There's a video on the website.
There are videos on the DPW website that show you exactly how it works. So the better you adhere to the rules, the quicker it'll get out of there. And there's also a surplus of wood chips. So call City Hall, get some wood chips, get your mulch out, because they will deliver it, they want it gone. Sorry for piling on, Tom.
Tom, just have, I have a quick question. Back three or four, maybe five years ago, the city did a exercise with the fire department, police department, Homeland Security, I think, for a exercise for disaster recovery? If something of disaster magnitude, like a train collapse or a big, big fire or something. You went through the whole exercise and learned, I know Kent said he learned a heck of a lot, what we do and what we didn't know about how to respond. And they plan to do it again? Is that coming up anytime soon?
I haven't heard that it is. We do rely...
Wasn't there planned data when the next one would be?
Not that I'm aware of. We do rely on Chief Fenning, he is our appointed emergency management coordinator, and so that is his, part of his purview to schedule such exercises. I can ask him if there's anything in the plans for, for anything coming up.
I got to see him Friday, so I'll just ask him.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Molly, anything to add?
So a little update on the personnel. Unfortunately, Mary Kay has received an offer she can't refuse and will be leaving us, so we are going to be very short-staffed. Luckily, we were already in the process of hiring, so hopefully we'll be having some develop her spot and Dottie's spot sooner rather than later. In the meantime, I just ask everybody to bear with Crystal and I while we combat the short staffing and work through, you know, the priority list of everything that we handle on a day-to-day basis. So, thank you. Oh, and if you know anybody who is looking, we are, of course, eager to interview qualified individuals.
Okay, and I'll refer you to the treasurer's report that's in the packet for that report. Is there any council requests for future agenda items? Going once? Okay. Look in the packet for correspondence, and with that, our meeting is now adjourned at 8:01 PM. packet for correspondence. And with that, our meeting is now adjourned at 8:01 PM.